Would all join us and pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In case of any rebellion or wish of sins on the nation under God, in the name of this world, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Streeter.
I want to know about it, have a meeting. Your heavenly father, thank you for, for what we just said, and thank you for liberty and justice for all. And you know it's under your name and under your will only. Please be with us as we make the decision for the county, business of the county this evening. Or please fill us with your spirit and guidance. Thank you, Lord, for getting our kids off to school safe. And please continue to watch over them as they, as they get comfortable in this coming year. Lord, we.
All right. Please let the record show that all three commissioners are here along with council and the auditor's office. I would like to add under new business F health insurance. Is anyone else have anything else they'd like to add to the agenda?
I do.
Okay.
Um, so let me, uh, we, we have a D or you want to do that E and then F. EMS. Um, also, we still have our budget. And since the discussion has happened publicly at the council, I would like to also add county wheel tax and excise sir tax. That is all I have.
Make a motion to approve budget as amended. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, first and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. Uh, we have no appointments at this, oh, review minutes. Um, I do have one small correction on the minutes. Uh, under appointments, there was not an employment agreement for the superintendent. It was just flat, uh, hiring of the superintendent. So I would strike employment agreement from that.
Um, we actually did have one, it was just not executed.
It was voted out.
Okay, but it was still on the agenda, you're right, okay. Got it.
So with that strike, as there was no agreement, um, executed, I make a motion to approve the minutes for the August fifth, twenty twenty five meeting. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. New business, uh, disposition of six oh one Lawton Street in Bicknell, Indiana. Drew, what do we have here today?
Uh, this was a property acquired by Tax D by the county. We offered.
No, not you guys.
We offered to sell it to the adjoining landowners. Uh, today was the receipt of the bids, uh, by noon today. We did have two offers for the property. One was for eight hundred dollars, the other was for eighteen hundred dollars. The city of Bicknell and Mr. Chin Share Char.
Yeah.
Um, we now have to send the notices back out, make offer that they can send a new amount in if they want, uh, and then board it at the next meeting to the highest offer, so.
Do you?
I have a quick question. Um, we've done this several times, but the, I reviewed the code specifically on these types of transfers and the processes we have to go through. Um, in a section in the code, it talks about how we can transfer the property to a city or a town. Prior or without this process. If we can, it's section six point eight in the code.
We can do that.
Okay, so if we have a city or a town that is wanting the transfer, do we have to go through this bid process?
If we.
Cause now they bid.
Yeah, if we know the city or town wants it, and this scenario, the individual that wanted it was not the city or town.
Okay, 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 I just wanted to be clear. Um, gotcha, all right. But even now that it's been bid, if they do want it, does that change this process any?
We started under the one, I would say we have to follow it through. I mean, if we reject all, we can do that and then go the reverse, but I would say we follow through on what we already did.
Okay.
Do you need official action or just move forward?
No, we can't take official action.
Well, I meant to re, uh, read submit.
Okay, I just wanted to, I had some questions there with, with Bicknell being one of the bidders.
Okay, uh, law enforcement and service agreement. Uh, this is a standard agreement between Knox County Sheriff's Department, and this one is for Hendrix Concrete. Uh, so I would make a motion to approve, uh, the standard agreement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, first and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
I, I have, I just have a comment. Um, the dates on it are twenty twenty three, is that? It, the terms on this aren't accurate.
John does these, so.
Okay.
He might have just pulled the wrong one from when we did in twenty twenty three, would be my guess, he recirculated it.
Okay, okay, I just, I didn't want to sign a contract that's already out of date for the term.
Yeah, John, John does those, he, he, I can have him fix it.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Uh, interlocal agreement utility service, uh, board, uh, on road cuts. This is basically, um, this is on Seaver's Road. And there is a housing addition going on or going out that way. Um, and the utility service was going to cut in six different sections, Seaver's Road, which is a road that was paved two years ago. Uh, we've asked them instead to mill pave that section, uh, from the start to the finish. Uh, so the question on the table is, do they need to pay the road cut fee? I'm of the opinion that no, they, they shouldn't pay that if they're going to do the mill pave and put the road back basically the same way it is currently. Um, that's basically the only thing we need on that, correct group?
Yeah, all other terms have been discussed, discussed and agreed upon.
So I would make a motion that they do not need to make, uh, additional payment, uh, in lieu of the fact that they are doing a mill pave. And that's, I believe it was a one and a half inch, um, pay, a mill. So they'll mill down the section and then pave it in a complete section so that there's not multiple cuts. So I'd make that motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any comment?
Um, yes.
Yep.
So I don't think they should have to fill out a permit in the first place. Um, it is our, technically our ready project, but, so you're, you're saying that they're only going to. Cause the terms of this are technically what we choose. You're, you're saying that they're going to backfill the cut and only fill in the cut? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you said?
From the first cut to the last cut.
Okay.
So it's one continuous instead of, uh, a washboard.
Okay, um, understood. Okay, no, there, there should be no fee whatsoever, and they shouldn't have to apply. Um, they shouldn't have been turned down in the first place. So we, um, we need absolutely not charge them.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, none heard, motion carries three zero. Claims, uh, make a motion to approve claims.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Payroll, same, I'd make a motion to approve payroll, all in favor signify by say, or need a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
None hearing, motion carries three zero. Health insurance, Jim Franklin, good evening, sir, how are you?
Um, good, good.
Great. Uh, first, I'd like to say, uh, we had an executive meeting last Tuesday. Uh, we heard from, um, a number of insurance agencies looking, uh, at our, our, our health insurance. Uh, and I'd very much like to say thank you to those agencies for coming out. Mr. Franklin, you have some stuff to go over with us.
The one who really deals with this every day, you guys get it for a few days each year, but.
Speak for yourself. Some of us do it.
Well, you know, as we've been talking about this, and I think I probably even brought this up last year. You know, the thing that we're seeing today, I think I've told you, you know, I run two very large school districts in state. And we're seeing the same thing there. Large claims are getting larger. Uh, but I told a couple of you just this just lately, I had a private employer, uh, that's close to here. Just recently had a nine point one million dollar claim. One person, nine point one million dollars. And so while we've not had that to deal with, what we have had to deal with is is that our large claims are getting larger. And so what we're going to talk about tonight is is that, you know, what I've got in front of you is if you turn to page three. Do you like my page number?
Nice.
So I think I've said this before to me. You can have a good year and a bad year. And I always said, you know, listen, the perfect year is, let's have three or four people to have large claims, because we buy reinsurance to protect us against that. So the county self insured, you are the insurance company, you make the decisions on how things work. Then you buy reinsurance in case somebody has a catastrophic claim. And the county pays those claims, and then the reinsurer reimburses those monies, go back to her. I'm saying she's dealing with this every day, those monies go back to her office to go back in the account. This is our third year in a row, we've really had some very large claims. Uh, when you look at page three, and this is an update from the one the other day.
Oh, okay.
And so that's what I wanted you to look at this. We had another thirty thousand dollars of reimbursements come in, in the month of, uh, in the month of July. So right now, the reinsurer is just a few dollars, you can see that where it says claims over specific, you see a number of five hundred and ninety four thousand dollars. So we've still got, you know, sixty days of claims yet to go, and the reinsurer has reimbursed us six hundred thousand dollars already. We know that we've got some more to come. Uh, in fact, we've got a surgery that just pre- recently happened, that's not getting, I'm sure it hit like one next month's claims. If you remember, it's been about four years ago, I made a recommendation that we joined what's called a rate cap. The reason we did that, and we had to put up equity for that. So the first two years, the county had to put money into an account, that money's still there. It draws dividends, so that money is actually drawing dividends or lacking interest to sit in that account. So those monies still won't be used, they're in an account, and it's growing. I create amounts five or six percent a year, but it does have growth. But the reason we went into the captive is because it kind of makes you a fool. And so we give you protection that we can't get with just a regular reinsurer. The first one is it capped on what our renewals did. And on that specific reinsurance premium, it gives a cap of thirty percent. I know that sounds like a lot, but if we had not had that the last few years, we would have seen forty and fifty percent increases. In fact, I'll show you the, where we sent it out here a minute ago, and we had several carriers come back that were saying, you know, to be competitive, they were going to be between forty five and fifty percent increase. So our captive gives us a cap of thirty percent. The other thing it does is that it gives us a known new laser contract. So in regular reinsurance, for instance, we had one claimant this year that went over four hundred thousand dollars. If under regular reinsurance contract, the reinsurer might come in at the beginning of the year, renewal time, and say, hey, rather than you paying the first seventy five thousand dollars on this individual, now we're going to raise that to two fifty or three hundred thousand. Now, if that liability falls back to you, you're paying those additional dollars rather than the reinsurer paying it. With the captive, we can't have that. The other one, I never understood how important it was until a Friday morning about six weeks ago, I got a call at eight o'clock on a Friday morning. They said, hey, you need to call this employer today and tell them, we've got to cover a check for five point eight million today. But when you call the owner of the business and say, hey, we got to get five point eight million dollars in the checkbook today, the phone goes very silent. Do you have what we call a advance fund? And what that does is is that if we have that huge money, and listen, having a two million dollar claim is just almost a daily thing. So you having a million or two million dollar claim is an absolute possibility. If, if we don't have advance funding, and we had a million and a half dollar claim then, they're going to call Lisa and say, Lisa, hey, we've got a check that's going out for a million and a half dollars, and do you have a million and a half dollars in the account for that? Probably not. So what we have is it's called advance funding, they write the check, and then they hold it. And they file with the reinsurance, then the reinsurer sends the county the check, then we mail out the check that we wrote, so that it all crosses. So it keeps you from having to be hit like that particular employer did with saying, hey, you know, we need six million dollars this year. So with all that being said, you know, if we put those protections in, uh, we did hit our cap renewal this year, actually it's, it's a twenty nine percent increase. But three years in a row, we, we are spending more in claims than they are getting in premium. So other people in that pool are paying for your, for your losses. Now, one of these days, we're going to have a good year, promise me it happens. And when we do, we're going to pay for somebody else's losses, but the last three years, it's been in our claim. So my recommendation is going to be that we just stay where we're at, renew with the, with the same, uh, reinsurer that we have. Now, let me get you those numbers. But I am going to make one, uh, I am going to make one change. And that is currently the county pays the first seventy five thousand dollars on an individual. And I think that we need to raise that to one hundred thousand.
Get to explaining, Jim Franklin.
I will.
Hmm.
So what that's going to mean is is that right now, if, if somebody has a large claim, the county paid the first seventy five thousand dollars to that party. So for instance, we, like you said, we had a claim this year over four hundred thousand. The county only paid seventy five thousand in that. The reinsurance that we bought paid the rest in that claim. So everywhere from seventy five to the four, I think it's ended up being four and thirty thousand. Our reinsurance that we bought took care of all that. What I'm saying is is that because of the increase in premiums and what we can get if we look at this, let's say, let's take the, the liability of seventy five thousand, let's move that up to a hundred. So now, we had that same, it's called a five hundred thousand dollar claim. Now, you're going to pay a hundred thousand of it rather than only seventy five. But for that, the reinsurer is going to charge you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less premium. And premium is real. So Lisa gets billed every month of fixed cost. And that bill comes through, if you don't have one dime in claims, you have fixed costs. You pay Anthem to administer your claims, and you buy your reinsurance. And she gets a bill for that every month that gets paid. I don't like premium because premium is real, you know, I mean, you pay it. If you don't have any claims, you pay that premium. If we can save a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in premium, and only take on an additional twenty five thousand dollars of risk on each person, we have to have six people hit that hundred thousand before we even break even. If the seventh or seventh person hits, now we're twenty five thousand dollars in the hole. But six people can hit it, and it's a break even for us. This year, if we had four, so we would have saved fifty thousand in premium, and premium is real. When we take a look at our last few years, we, we, each year, we've really had this four or five people hit. So I think that it is, uh, as we talked about the other day, a risk or a gamble, that we would move up to a hundred. But I think saving the hundred and fifty thousand and taking that risk is well worth it. And this is not the first time we've moved up. You know, when we started doing this years ago, we started out with a thirty five thousand dollar specific, we went to a fifty, and we went to a sixty, and we went to seventy five. I do believe that it's well worth us taking that up to a hundred thousand. Let's save the hundred and fifty thousand in premium and then pay the claim. If we only have three or four people hit it, again, we'd put fifty thousand dollars back in, in our costs. So I think that that's really what the question is today, is, you know, do we want to stay with the same liability that we are right now at the seventy five thousand? Or do we want to save the hundred and fifty thousand dollars in premium and put that up to a hundred thousand? Other than that, benefits are all remaining the same. So, you know, and benefits are very competitive, we've got a thousand to doctor door, we've got very low co-pays to go see the doctor, to go buy your prescription drugs, all that will just remain the same as before.
Okay, I'll go first. Um, so we have added an additional, uh, five hundred thousand into the budget for next year. Our main goal is to add more of the employer contribution so that the employee family plan can come down, the employee contribution would come down. Um, it's, it's not a secret, that's very expensive, and the only way, the only way that we can drive that down is to add additional funds to that.
Um. Do you need to tell our plan once?
Um, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. What we're looking at right now is is that we have come up with a plan, and right now, the county only has two, what we call a two premium rate structure. We have a single premium and a family premium. What we're going to look at is is that let's change that to a four way structure, which is really most common today with all employers, is that we have a premium for a single, an employee and spouse, an employee and children, and a family. Right now, if you're on the family plan, you only got your spouse on there, you pay the same thing as the person that's got a wife that's, or a spouse that's. And I think right now, if I'm not mistaken, that premium is about eleven hundred and twenty three dollars a month to have that, so it's not quite six hundred per pack. What we're looking at is is that if we go to a four way structure, we could set it up to where if you're just putting your children on, it would cost you three hundred and fifty a month. If you're only putting your spouse on, that would be five hundred a month. The reason being is is that kids are cheaper than adults. A spouse is an equal, uh, is equal to the employee in risk, they're in equal risk, because most generally, our spouse is very close to our age, and as we age, you know, we buy more medicine, and we go to the doctor, and, you know, stuff like that. Then if you want the full family, rather than that being like eleven hundred and twenty three dollars like it is now, we'd set that at seven hundred. So we do have a plan. The reason we want to do that is because some of these people that are wanting to put people on, putting dependents on, may only be wanting to put their children on. In fact, I think that we may have, that may end up being the greatest number of kids, worrying about kids. And if we do, you know, the only time kids, uh, my nine million dollar claim was a child, but those are rare. You know, most generally, kids are allergies and broken arms and stuff like that, they're not really expensive. And then, and like you said, if we put a spouse on, it's five hundred. We may have some people that say, you know, I only want to put my spouse on, I don't have kids anymore. So I think that it, it gives, it makes it more competitive and more economically feasible for an employee to look at, hey, I could put my children on, or I could just put my spouse on, and it's a lot less, and that's eleven hundred and twenty three dollars.
And that's, I mean, everything obviously hinges upon, I hate to throw you guys out there, but everything hinges upon council and what they're able to do. Um, and, and, and so I don't want to get ahead of the cart on that one. Um, but like I said, we did add in a half million, uh, several years back, the council, uh, took some money out of that, um, account.
That's paid in a different account than this.
We're trying to add that back in. Wh- what we want to do is, and yes, you are right, it is a different account, but it goes to the same. Um, so hopefully, if they're able, that's the, that's the plan of action at this point in time, is to get that family plan at a reasonable rate.
And we're looking at making that effective for January one.
Yes.
Uh, not for October one, because number one, people that are putting dependents on, have probably got open enrollments with their employers for January one, so I'm going to say that coordination would work a lot better to do that piece on January one, and we can do that soon.
Okay, we've talked about this for years. This isn't a new discussion, this isn't a new topic, it isn't a new need. Um, again, it all comes to the same plan, the same great plan we have, the same great price we have. The only thing is, is adding dependents, which are ultimately adding premium and adding claims.
And let's, let me just correct that for you.
Yes.
So as far as premium, no. So, so our admin fee that we pay to Anthem is a per employee fee, so we're paying that, that's going to be the same, and what we're paying the reinsurer is a per employee fee. So the only thing we're really creating is we aren't creating additional claims. So that money will come in to pay claims, and those people don't have claims, we have to have money to pay the claims.
So the premium itself, as if we pay now per employee, there is no premium addition for the dependents, is what you're saying? Okay, okay. My point here is, is this has been a, this has been a known, this has been the one outlier in Knox County government health insurance since I've been involved. We all knew it, we all wanted it, and we've been told, um, I've sat at your desk for years, how do we figure this out, Jim? And it's been money, Kelly. A million dollars.
That's right.
Um, and, and we, as a county, um, again, we've had committees in the past, um, with councilmen to discuss this topic, and the money really ha- has been the sticking point, um, of funding it. So, but back, back to what I asked you.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is if we go to a hundred thousand dollar specific, you're paying three hundred and ninety nine dollars and ten cents per employee per month. So we've got what we call composite number.
Okay. Yes.
So, so what we're doing is is that we have composite numbers, so we don't have a different premium for a single versus a family. So your reinsurer, we're just charging three hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Got it.
So that's being paid already. What we are doing though, again, let's go back, we are picking up the liability of those people, and that was.
It's a giant gamble. It's a giant gamble. I mean, you're one, it might not, I mean.
And that was the reason we talked about, when I, I thought I brought this up the other day, I made a recommendation, can we go to a four way rate? Because like, like I said, I don't mind picking up some kids, and we might pick up some kids and not pick up spouses. Cause a spouse might have insurance elsewhere. And a spouse is an, is an equal liability to us.
Understood. So you are now estimating half a million?
And here's, and again, and here's why. So we originally talked about having a family rate might be as low as, you know, four or five hundred a month, or not. So that these numbers are a little bit higher to see if, if we get people to participate.
Okay.
And when we look at this, you know, I think, it's very open to how, I think if we look at the courthouse, I don't think you'll have many in the courthouse that are going to pick up the.
No, there's specific departments.
Yeah. And even when I, even when I look at the highway garage, I don't think, I think we may have a few at the highway garage. Where we're going to pick people up is at the sheriff's department. So how many are we going to pick up? I don't think you're going to pick up fifty, if we pick up fifty. If we pick up fifty, then the five hundred thousand is not enough. But if we pick up twenty or twenty-five, and that's coming out of the gate, might be the number. And I'm going to say most of that would come out of the sheriff's department, then five hundred thousand would, would catch it. Then if we want to look at lowering that contribution level in the future, then I mean, we got to take a look at our claims and see if the claim fund is giving us that. Because what we're talking about doing is, is that the additional appropriation of five hundred thousand will go into the account that sits there. We can't earmark that, that this, that this money only pays for dependents. It goes in, she's got a current account. And all money goes into, the claims come out of that, she gives a, a thing to Anthem, I think, on Wednesday, that says this is how much we will pull out on Friday. We got one account that's got money in it. And that appropriation would go into that account to give us additional dollars to pay claims. Again, uh, it's a lag. And so if we have fifty people pick up dependents, then we probably don't have enough money. But when I look at it, I mean, you do think, what do we think that ever is? I think twenty to twenty-five is a reasonable number and I think most of that comes out of the sheriff's office.
Again, great, great program, great product, great service. We've had it all for years, um, but to add with, to add that much money, and let me, let me just put it into perspective here. You know, I, I provide insurance for myself. You know, I currently don't have to provide one for my children, so I don't have to worry about that. But I do know a lot of people that do. I get it, we've always gotten it, we've always wanted to be able to do it. But again, we're self-insured. It is unknown variables. And to add a half a million dollars to our budget, where all I've heard is tax reform, lower taxes, this, this is, this is, this, and with no council input, this is concerning. So, um, I'm glad we've come to this point. I'm glad we have a structure. I think it's great, but we have some financial implications that need to be discussed, um, so.
I'm here to provide.
Right, absolutely.
I think we're ahead of the horse, or the horses are ahead of in this one. Um, in the fact that, again, it'll be up to the council if they're able to provide those additional resources. What we have before us today is to vote on continuing or not continuing the current plan as it is. Uh, everything else is speculation until budget time. And there has been conversations with council, certain members of the council.
Certain members. So you're telling me that we are going to, these are two completely separate plans that we're going to have? I mean, I, I know we have our, open enrollment starts next week, week after, literally. Um, so if we get to a point to where the money is allocated for this, we're going to have, and we're going to go through this again, is, we don't have to do this at the same time?
No, no, so, so this is two different decisions. Do not use the insurance side. So tonight, we're, we're renewing the reinsurance. And the reinsurance, you know.
My question is, I guess, is with us changing our structure with the potential of adding claimants, is that going to change this health insurance now? Now, okay.
We, we will renew it tonight and then we're good for the next twelve months.
Got it.
And then, and actually, I think you'll come in and make another. Do I have to ask him? I, I don't know if you can come in and do another vote to, to actually do the dependent. Because you're going to find out if you give the additional appropriations. If you do, then you're going to say, okay, we're going to change the contribution. So, so this is really two different pieces. What you say are.
And one isn't dependent upon the other?
No.
Well, I mean, the bottom line. Knowing we're going to add claimants.
No, no. And like I said, the way we're set up right now, we're paying Anthem five dollars.
Yeah, I know.
Five dollars and eight five cents per employee per month. So if, if you add a spouse on, we don't pay another five eight five, but everything is a per employee number. And it's the same thing on the reinsurance. It's two completely separate items.
Okay.
Well, we're doing, we're renewing a reinsurance contract. So that we've got reinsurance against large claims next year. We're not even renewing the benefit plan. We're renewing a reinsurance contract and not even, that's what we're doing now. We're saying we're going to leave benefits the same, and I know that we're going to.
Okay, well, it was health insurance on our agenda, so it's the reinsurance.
That's what you're really renewing tonight.
Okay.
You're renewing two things. You're renewing the contract with Anthem and you're renewing the contract with the captain that provides you for reinsurance. But it won't change your numbers if we, we get into November and you say, hey, I want to change the deductible to two thousand dollars or to five hundred dollars. That doesn't affect what we're doing tonight. We're, we're, we are renewing, Anthem is the administrator. And also, I did show you, we had numbers, looking at the hospital's plan. But you'd have a ninety-one thousand dollars to pay Anthem to run out of claims next year, their numbers end up being higher.
So I, I think, again, we're, we're only looking tonight at the reinsurance and the Pareto.
And, and, and doing that sets it up so that they can start their open enrollment.
Right.
Like she said, open enrollment starts in May.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion, we renew with our carrier Anthem and our co-insurance as well as Pareto.
I'll second that. Any further?
Before you also put in there, what's, are we going to stay at the seventy-five thousand percent or go to the hundred thousand?
I'm.
I'm not a big gambler.
I'm in my motion for a hundred thousand.
You want to do a hundred?
Yes. That's what's recommended in, looking historically, I mean, we're, we, we don't have to, but it makes sense, looking at our, um, our stop-loss premium.
I don't know, I'm not a big gambler on that. And, and I don't want to get us into a situation where I'm looking at council saying, you need more money. Um, yeah.
Well, that's with anything we do in this, but if, I.
You want to roll the dice?
I mean, to, to move it from seventy-five to a hundred with a hundred and fifty savings in stop-loss. And historically, and I've looked at them ever since I've been elected, we have four, five, I think, six max one year. We're s- we're still going to save money, but.
Our real problem was the number one, number two. So we, we always put those in.
It, it doesn't matter to me.
You know, we always have one or two. This is not our first four hundred and fifty thousand dollar claim. We had one, I think, last year, eight, nine hundred.
It was.
Yeah, okay.
It's a hard dollar savings, um, as opposed to, but it doesn't matter. Um, I can, are we going to leave it or change it?
I second your motion. Yeah, there's a first and a second on the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, none, heard, motion carries. What else do you have, boys?
So did we move, did we stay at seventy-five or did we?
No, we, a hundred was her motion.
Okay, all right.
Feel like an oxen ear.
This is the reinsurance.
Reinsurance.
She and I asked us, so this is, this is for the hundred thousand.
Okay.
I got those fancy page notes on there.
Yeah. Today is the.
Nineteenth.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim, thank you. Ms. Streeter, EMS updates.
Um, as I stated in the last meeting, the, um, the mayors, their council representatives, well, no, just the BICN, um, myself and council president Morris and our attorneys met, um, to discuss our EMS contract that we have with Good Samaritan that provides our service for emergency ambulance service in the county. Um, that contract can, shocking, we've been in that over two years now. Um, it expires July one of twenty-six. And because of the timing and how government works, um, it was presented to us, a draft renewal contract from the hospital to review and then negotiate for next year. Um, we each were, we were presented that already by our attorney. Um, we met several months ago and had discussion about what we each thought. Typical discussion about, um, the service and the, the funds and whatnot. But at the time, uh, the cities were very concerned because of in, um, the legislation through, uh, this session's, uh, Senate Bill One. We all think it's a property tax bill, but it really is all local government taxes encompassed. The primary being our local income tax structure is changing. Um, the cities have done some more homework, we reconvened. And, um, because the lit local income tax structure will not technically make a change until twenty-seven, um, which will impact our budgets, um, we all three agreed with our council present that, um, the terms, we agreed to the terms, we agreed to a financial number, and we agreed we would continue working together with Good Samaritan, providing the service for a year and a half past our date, which would bring us to January of twenty twenty-eight. Um, then our lit structure will change, which will change the way we pay for it, which will change our inter-local. So at that point, we can then renegotiate based upon our income strategy. So, um, it was a great conversation, um, it was great information. Um, we had great communication. Um, bottom line is, we have a high-quality service, far exceeding our expectations. They are managing the, uh, income, um, to exactly what our income guarantee is. And I, I believe that we'll have that, Andrew, you can correct me. We'll have that contract hopefully back from the hospital within the next few months, ready for all of our entities to then individually review in public meetings and, um, hopefully pass. Uh, the only changes in the contract that we have currently um, will be the terms, as I just mentioned, the time terms because of the lit structure changing, as well as the amount, um, the cost. But other than that, um, and we also are looking at changing the amount of time we can, um, get out of the contract if need be. But other than that, I don't foresee any other major changes. It was, um, Andrew will, once he, Andrew, I believe, once you get back with Graham and that's sent back to us, we'll then send and hopefully have on our docket. Did I miss any piece of that?
No.
No, so all good with cities, um, in that contract negotiation. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, everybody who's involved in that. I know Ms. Streeter, you and your council and several others have been involved in that process, so, um, it sounds like it's, uh, coming to an end. So thank you. Uh, budget.
Um, yeah, just a few questions. Did you, did you get clarity on the extreme raise in social security?
Yeah, I, I asked her again, uh, she felt strong on that number, we could lower it, she said. Um, I don't pretend to understand how that number is driven, um.
Okay. Just doesn't seem realistic.
Yeah, it's a big jump, that was, and, and I don't disagree with you, it's a big jump.
Yeah.
But that was the numbers we were providing.
Um, again, adding half a million to our in, health insurance budget is, is, I, I understand the purpose, it's something we've wanted to do for years. I, I, again, I know the council can cut if they so choose. Um, but this, the general fund is one hundred percent, this fund is purely funded from property tax revenue. And for us to make great raises in that, in this environment, I, I'm, I just, I just don't think that's, um, realistic either. Um, professional services, I know you mentioned you raised it to forty because of engineering services at the highway. Are we going to keep that there and not use highway money?
Yes, we will use the highway monies. Um, I'm trying to get in my memory bank if we raise that there or not. Uh, we did leave that as forty. For if we have other things coming up. I know we always push the envelope on that by the end of the year. We have a little bit left over in this year's budget, we're looking pretty good, but we did leave that.
Okay, um, postage went way up. Um, we, in years past, is, do you, did you, do you know why? Did someone identify?
Next year, clerk is in the office, or in the building today, election year is next year, postage has gone up. I believe it's seventy cents now, a stamp, something to that effect.
Sixty-nine cents.
Sixty-nine.
These forms that were required to generate when it comes to voter registration delay, it's format, this is state strike four. That address correction blessed on there to show us through the window. Therefore, we cannot use the discounted data mail for a lot of payments. I have to pay full postage on those, but if I don't and they return it, then we're able to kind of pay about a dollar return fee.
Yeah.
If you pay it at seventy or sixty-nine cents, the return fee is, is way down.
Yeah, and so the, the budget was increased because, as I said, it is an election year. We know that the clerk is going to have, uh, quite a bit of postage to be going through.
That's a lot of darn postage. Um, I know there had been emails earlier in the year, uh, about KCRC. They didn't receive their allocation yet last year, so it's doubled this year.
That is correct, it's doubled this year and it'll go back to a single next year.
I, my question there that I have is, I was looking back in my notes, in KCRC, it was the reported that their utilities would be moved by the end of July?
That has not happened, uh, to my knowledge.
There's, yeah, there's no dirt move, so.
To my knowledge, nothing has happened on that.
Okay, are, are.
I'll, I'll follow up though.
Okay.
I'll, I'll definitely follow up with, uh, with them.
Um, also, I just, again, um, this is a nineteen and a half percent raise in our property tax budget. That is extremely a lot. That will impact the tax rates. Um, I just, just very, very aware of what this means with our budget going up twenty percent. Okay, all right. Um, edit. So, just real quick, thank you for amending Mike McKiska's contract. Um, I did notice that we now have zero for the Pantheon. Um, I, I'd like an explanation of why we're taking them out of our budget.
Sure, uh, a couple of points. Uh, this was at the meeting, uh, last Tuesday morning. Um, it was an administrative meeting and basically, uh, that was brought up for discussion. Uh, we are asking a lot from council, there is no doubt about it. And however we can fund items, if it comes out of whatever fund, I don't, um, that, that.
Edit is very specific on what it can be used for.
But also, you know, three-pronged, uh, first and foremost, the Pantheon was not supposed to be operating expenses paid by taxpayers. Um, the year prior to my coming on, it was told to them, they would have three years at a hundred thousand. Uh, so the last, and they had money before that too. Last year it was one ninety-five. So instead of going off of or lower, uh, taxpayer-driven, it, it went up. Um, and, and second of all, if it's a fifty-fifty with the city, they haven't fulfilled their end.
Um, is this in a written agreement form? I'm just curious, because I.
Written agreement form with the city?
Well, the three years at a hundred, I, is that in a written agreement?
Yeah, y'all did it, it was the year before I came on.
Again, I, I was there, I recall, but was it in a written agreement? Do we have a?
You wrote it out or not, I don't know that.
It was before my time, I don't think there is one now.
There isn't, I don't believe either. Um, the city, we, um, I, I can't speak on behalf of a match with the city. Um, as, in regards to your comment about a hundred and ninety-five last year, um, that was the same amount we obligate to our, um, economic development corporation, which is, um, also intent of economic development. Um, so that's where that came from. But I, so you're saying we're not going to fund it because our, our what? Our time has run out, I'm not understanding.
No, because from the very beginning, it was not supposed to be.
But you weren't here.
I wasn't here.
Okay, you weren't. Okay, you weren't here and we don't have a written agreement, but that's the way it was supposed to be. I'm just trying to figure out where that basis came from of, we're not supposed to fund it anymore. Because that's the way it was in the beginning.
No, at the very beginning, the county said this would not be a continuous drain on the taxpayers. Each year it has been. It, 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 we funded them. Um, and you know, I mean, as with.
Yes, it is, it is.
As with everything in the budget, uh, if council wants to add it back in, they're more than welcome to. But uh, you know, the meeting. We discussed it.
O- okay, I, I'm, I'm in a meeting now and I'm asking now what the basis is, so.
That's the basis.
We were only to fund it for three years at a hundred thousand and the city was to give the same. And we're not going to fund it any longer because of those reasons.
We're not gonna fund it any longer, in my opinion, only my opinion. Uh, because at some point in time, if they were never supposed to be so uh, funded by the. Taxpayers and they were supposed to be a self-funded agency. At what point do they become a self-funded agency versus going from a hundred thousand to one hundred and ninety five thousand? Which is what we, we gave them last year.
Well, KCID was never to also be a self-funded agency that provides our um. Economic Development Services as well as the Pantheon, which was engaged in with the city. Um, to provide um, entrepreneurship opportunity, co-working space and a whole other host of small business um, programs. They are doing the same thing in tandem. So that is why they've become equal in funding. I don't know why the Pantheon asked for less this year. I'm assuming that their donations are up, but when we engaged in an interlocal with the city. There was never any language that specified we weren't going to use tax dollars. Um, we own the building and we engage them to provide this very particular vital service to our county. I, I, I'm aware it's not understood and liked um, by some, but at the same time, it's the same. Focus and vision that we have with KCID, so that.
Sure, and, and once again, if, if that's the way you feel, uh, and you'd like to approach council and ask them to add it back in. They're more than welcome to. This is our budget to them and ultimately, at the end of the day, they have full. Um, authority on whatever our budget is. It's the same as the, the half million for uh, the.
Yeah.
Insurance. Nothing, nothing I would like more than to be able to drive that down, but it all hinges on one thing. Um, and, and so again, you know. It's up to the council ultimately.
I, I'm aware of council works and I, I appreciate what you're saying. I, my tact is just different of handling. Our budgets with the council, so um, yes, I believe that the Pantheon needs added back. Um, at their request, just like all the other entities that have requested, um, including KCID. In our economic development income shares. And other than that, I reviewed the public safety lit. Those things are back in whole. I appreciate that. And that's all the questions I have about the budget.
You have anything you'd like to say about budget? Okay, wheel tax.
Uh, yes, so um, I didn't attend the council meeting. I generally don't anymore. Um, but I, I've, it's come to my attention through media. And many phone calls that apparently it was discussed at the last council meeting and I get it, lots of cities and towns are doing that right now. My face was on some media outlet of sorts about my speaking on this matter, so I wanna be very clear. I wanna take this time to be very clear. We as county, um, so House Bill fourteen sixty one. Which passed, it's a road funding bill in the legislative session this spring. Um, it, in my opinion, it wasn't a road funding bill. It was a switcheroo of monies. It wasn't new funding. It's existing funding. And I keep hearing that, and yes, I stood before our legislature many times and said. We do not need another tax in Knox County. We need to have the option to choose what taxes we implement, not mandates. And we also shouldn't have taxes tied to receipt of other grants that is technically already our money. Um, fuel tax, excise, things like that. Um, the, the problem with that being, we have legislators that aren't exactly engaged in county government. So, as I stated at the end of session, the wheel tax, which I will call it the low hut. It's the wheel tax and excise surtax. We all pay excises on our vehicles now. But what the low hut is, is the county would pass a low hut. It is, it is not how many wheels you have, it's per plate. Let me be clear on that. And every plate is different. It's how many pounds, if it's a semi tractor, a trailer, an RV, a bus, they're all different. And whatever plate you have, the county can assign a fee based upon a scale of fees. So, what this law did, it did not change community crossings. It lowered the amount in the bucket. But let me be clear, fourteen sixty one does not require us to pass a low hut, a wheel tax to apply for CCMG. It's the same grant program. All of us are eligible to apply. No low hut requirement. It's relatively unchanged, except what the state did is they took. Here in the fiscal impact statement from the, the legislators themselves. So in every year, there's a bucket of money they take and they distribute it out through community crossings. In twenty twenty six, that bucket would have had two hundred and forty eight million. So what they're gonna do is they're gonna take a hundred million of that and put it in community crossing matching grant. We can still apply. The maximum is no longer a million and a half, it's a million. We can still apply without a wheel tax. They put fourteen and a half million to the stinking railroad. They put twenty million to NDOT for the tracks program. Next year, they're not giving any to Indy, but in years after, they're giving fifty million to Indy. And what's left over is now going to be called the LMDD. The Lane Mile Direct Distribution. So what that means is for those cities and counties and towns that pass a low hut. And if we pass that tax, the minimum amount we could take in would be two hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. If we pass that, we would then get an automatic distribution of whatever money is left out in that pot. Based upon our lane miles and our population. Now, we don't know who's gonna take the wheel tax. We don't know who's gonna pass the low hut. We don't know, it's based upon population, so how much will be direct distributed in twenty six is completely unknown. But I will tell you this, one more thing. CCMG is the same. It is gonna be more competitive. The pot is smaller. But those that pass a low hut and get that direct distribution based upon that formula. Which again, don't know how much that would be, how much we would leave off the table. Whatever you get, it lowers your CCMG max. So, let's say we pass that minimum low hut. We can still apply for community crossings even if we didn't. If we pass the low hut and got three hundred thousand, that comes off CCMG and we're only applicable for seven hundred thousand CCMG. So, again, I just wanna be clear. We do not have to pass a low hut to get CCMG. It is more competitive. There is less money in the pot, but at the same time, it's the facts. So, I am, I wasn't in favor of it then. I'm still not in favor of it now. And at this point in time, I just wanted to be clear about the facts.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, no old business at this point in time. Um, code compliance officer. Uh, I don't have a report from him. Uh, Ready two point oh.
I have just a few updates for you. Um, in terms of our projects from Ready One, uh, you may recall, we had a total of three. Um, one was the hospital simulation center. Uh, we're getting ready to turn in the last claim for that project. So they, once that's done, they will have drawn down their full four hundred thousand dollars that went toward the expansion. Of the simulation center at the hospital, so that's good news. Uh, the other two projects are big infrastructure projects, like in excess of a million dollars each. Uh, and both of those projects are currently in the bidding process. As a matter of fact, I think Water Utilities is opening. One of them tomorrow at their meeting. Uh, so those are underway. I will tell you that both of those projects in the state's mind are behind schedule. Uh, because any project across the state in Ready One that has less than fifty percent drawdown. They are looking at every one of those because, you know, this is the, you've heard me say shake the couch, couch cushions. Uh, the state budget agency wants to identify projects they think may not move forward. Obviously, both bars are. Uh, but we're having to feed information to the state constantly about this is where they are in the process. Um, all of that money has to be drawn down by the end of twenty twenty six because it's ARPA money originally. Um, so we're in good shape. It's just that the state is watching those two projects very closely to ensure that they're moving forward, which they are. So, um, the other thing I wanna share is that under, you've heard me talk about the Arts and Culture Regional Plan. Uh, that is in its final draft form, uh, and it's being reviewed by the Indiana Arts Commission. Uh, just to see if there's anything else that they wanna tweak uh, on our behalf. Uh, once that's in place, uh, what they've told us is that the, the monies that will be available through Lilly Endowment. For Arts and Culture are likely, the applications for that um, will be available probably by the end of this year. The application itself, and then I think they'll open the portal and we've got a couple of these types of projects. That uh, local organizations want to apply for, uh, that, that portal to apply for those funds should be open by the first of next year. So, that's what we're looking at. Um, and then next time I may have a couple of other updates for you on some Ready two point oh things that, that are happening.
Great, thank you.
That's all I've got today.
Have fun, by the way. You guys have a road trip coming up to.
Yeah, so the, uh, the mayor and I are headed to the Midwest Japan Association Conference uh, in Tokyo. Starting, I think we leave on the fourth. Um, and so we'll be there. This, the state still hasn't identified who's gonna represent Indiana. Um, so we're still waiting to hear that, but they'll be, um, we are planning and have already scheduled visits with both. Of the presidents of our two Japanese companies, uh, so we'll be making engagements with them and talking about. You know, business retention and expansion issues, what challenges they may be having, uh, which I think is really the main point of this trip. I mean, the conference is one thing, uh, but being able to visit the headquarters of two of our companies, I think is really the most important thing. Uh, making sure that they understand, we appreciate their investments here, understanding if there are future expansion, you know, opportunities that we can compete for. That to, in my mind, that's really what the trip's about.
Right, so, thank you, good luck.
So, county isn't gonna have representative?
Um, not this time.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Nothing on M.
Huh, right, yeah, but I, I. No, I mean, you are, but you aren't. Um, um, as a visitor myself, they greatly appreciate elected leaders, especially where their businesses sit. Yeah, thank you.
Um, and I have nothing for the judicials?
I do.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. So you're, um, again, KCRC Utilities, that is, they are moving. That's what you said? You're gonna get an update?
I will get an update.
Okay, but they're still moving, is it?
They are supposed to, yes.
Okay, um, so after the last meeting, um, there, there was some things thrown out on the table about. Other options, were those, what, what are those and have you?
I have not moved forward on any other options at this point in time. Um, we'll probably most likely have a uh, meeting at some point in the near future to discuss what our next moves are. Um, but at this point, I have nothing.
Okay, um, I, I looked back because um, this is, this has been ongoing for a long time. And so my, my recommendation is, this needs to absolutely go back to that space committee. That we set up, um, actually in twenty twenty two, um, we started this whole process. And did a, a space study. Um, all of our people started that meeting. We have thing after thing after thing. That space committee and they were the ones that really drove us to where we are today. We had joint commissioner council meetings. Um, so we're, we're two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in. We're so far down the road on this with a, all unanimous of everything until. January of this year, so. To just sit and, again, I, I think we need to put the space committee back together. I think there was a commis-, I know there was a commissioner on that. I think Trent was our representative council. I, I recall Ms. Shatton. Possibly Mr. Knowlting, it's good to see you. Um, we need to form that committee again and be talking about this jointly with council. So, is that, was that created by resolution, Andrew?
It was simply by minutes and there, it was, it wasn't a super formal committee.
Okay.
Most of the courts sat on it, clerk sat on it and I think almost every elected official was on it, to be honest.
Well, there were, yeah, there definitely were in this whole space program in July of twenty three. Um, but I think we need to formalize a committee um, before this just falls through the cracks.
Uh, I have no problems with that. Um, as I've said, from the, I think it was October. When they, uh, RQAW came in and said it would be two point three million dollars. I said, I'm, I'm in for two point three. However, the bids came back at three point six. Found out later after bids processed that we can only cut twenty percent before we have to rebid. We're still. Extremely over budget on that and I'm, I'm, I've said from the very beginning that I'm not in favor of going that far over budget. I am very much uh, wanting to do something, so I have absolutely no problem whatsoever with putting together another committee. Um, and looking at this again, um, but we need to stick within budget.
So that budget was initially, let me just, I mean, really here, that budget. Was initially, okay, so we signed a contract in September of twenty three. Um, with approval of the council unanimous to move forward with schematic design of these facilities. In June, that was finished of twenty four, we had estimates then. We then proceeded on and again, in, the construction documents were complete in November of twenty four. So, there is, there is some great amount of variable of time in here, which did change as well as us losing LARA. I mean, whether we like it or not, we lost our local, our local person. And we were assigned people that traveled here um, at a very high cost. So, yes, they did come in higher. There was time and other variables that did come in. But there is options for us to not stop now, especially with how much money we've invested. And I, I, I keep hearing amount of money, amount of money and taxes, and we're not raising taxes, and I've read it in the newspaper. Um, so, we as a county did go back in, in a joint meeting with the council. To review these costs and they did give us a nod on a certain amount of money. Um, no issue there. Uh, yeah, no issue there. Fast forward a year and a half, time, all the changes. Since then, um, and I truly believe this, we have not been very open. With the amount of public safety, local income tax we take in, because I keep hearing it's way over budget and we're not gonna raise taxes and we're not gonna raise taxes. But we have four point three million dollars in public safety lit. We receive a hundred and sixty five thousand a month. I'm not saying we should spend that. We have seven hundred and twenty eight thousand of that appropriated. We have three and a half million in cash for public safety. Now, on a positive note, we have, we knew and we all agreed for three years that we needed to look at our space. And get ourselves in a spot of our public safety needs. We were gonna tear down that old building. We were gonna redo the courthouse. I don't feel comfortable in sitting on this much cash and not moving forward with our plans.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree in the fact that that, that fund is flush with money. It, it most certainly is. We could pay for up to probably four million in cash. However, I've said from the beginning, I was. However, I've said from the beginning, I was comfortable with two point three million, not three point six. Um, and so I, I'll, I have no problems putting a space committee back together again. I have, we talked about it at the last meeting, uh, and, and going back to the drawing board and looking at, not disagreeing with you on that. So.
I'm just talking about this out loud.
How much do we approximately bring in on that lit tax?
Um, well, we have multiple income taxes, um, but public safety, we bring in around a hundred and sixty-five-ish a month. Thousand, yep.
That we pay out, was it sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents?
We, we don't. That is, that comes off the top.
Right.
And our portion is roughly fifty-two percent of that we pay, so we don't ever see that. This is after ambulance service.
Right.
Um, I'm not saying we should spend that much. I just want to be, I keep hearing we're not going to raise taxes, and we're not going to raise taxes. Um, this is the intent of this money, and I'm not, again, I'm not speaking on behalf of council, but I don't want to hear, I, I just, I'm not real comfortable with the tax language anymore. So, that is all I have on the EOC. So if you move on, I do have a question or two about Judicial Center.
Please do.
Um, so, your email about space, I'm, I'm, are we?
Yeah, I'm not choked up about it.
Well, I mean, I guess my question is, we're, we're looking, we, the old community corrections building. You know, right now, we use that for maybe one thing, and that's early voting. We, um.
Outside of Central Dispatch.
Well, that's its own entity. I mean, all that middle nonsense, we use that for one thing. So, I, I, I can't imagine us having all the issues and rem, doing that for anything, especially when we had already started the design of Judicial Center. Again, I know we're going off numbers from a year ago compared to whatever, but are we, we're absolutely not going to do anything else in regards to discussion about space, um, around a Judicial Center, or are we going to put that to a committee as well?
Why couldn't we just put a, I mean, obviously, we're out of space. That's obvious. And they're wanting to add a veterans' court in there, which we're going to have the space required for that. Um, we've got the new, new jail out there. You got work release. We're paying for forty-some million dollars. Um, and this might, just my understanding that as the taxes, or as it's county's debt goes up, our property taxes kind of in relation with that. Am I correct in assuming that?
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't change our SIS values and?
It does not. No, our, um, our levy is calculated based upon our AV and a few other factors that have, that don't in, include our debt, no. Um, but I, I just, I, we're talking about space again. We're talking about renting space. We're talking about remodeling junk. I, I just, if we need space, we need to go back to the plan we've been working on since July of, no, October of twenty-two. So, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, and as I've asked you a few times, um, you, you know, I'm all ears on suggestions on what to do in the now.
Well, I.
Um, and, and in the now is the judge is going to need space soon. I'm not exactly what you'd call choked up about redoing anything in that building. Um, and I don't disagree with the fact that that building really needs to be raised. Uh, we just need to be done with it. However, as I said, we have an, an here and now, and, and I, 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 you know, um.
Well, I ask that we not, I, I don't know, again. I wouldn't, we would need to put this to, on this agenda, because we need to know. I've only been told by meetings I've listened to, minutes I've read, that there's an addition of one staff member. I don't know. I don't know all the variables of it, but.
So.
We don't have space. We've remodeled every closet, bathroom, back hole, hallway, known demand, and all we have left is what we plan to raise, so.
So, initially, it'll be one staff, and as the program grows, it'll grow up to three.
I wouldn't know why we couldn't. Like, if it's critical we have space now, I'm not for renting, especially for twenty-five hundred dollars a month.
No, that's not.
That, that's not logical to me. Um, I don't know what an estimate on new roof would be and bleach that building down to where there's nothing left in it. And then, puts, I mean, we could store records over there, um.
I don't think we're moving our records again.
And that would, we could possibly.
No, I'm, go ahead.
Um, until we came up with a better option on, even if it kicks the can down two or three, rode two or three years on the building, when we do have the money to pay cash for it, um, from that lit for public safety. Um, but I wouldn't know why we couldn't scab that for three or four years and, uh, save ourselves a bunch of money, and then especially if it's just for record retention and, uh, so forth on that, and maybe put a couple offices in there, because there's quite a bit of space in there. So, or move, once we get the records cleaned out, put them in the bottom of the courthouse.
What records?
There's space in that jail where you could remodel it, like, put the records and stuff like that to keep them.
You're, you're talking about the clerk's records? There's a, uh, I don't want to call it an office, but there's a room down there.
Yeah, it's got all the records and stuff that we could move over there to clear up the basement.
Well, um, I mean, just, I, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars on building those storage units. We've had hundreds of hours, man-hours, putting them all in. I mean, I, it was a nightmare doing it all, and I didn't have to lift it all, praise the Lord. Um, so, I mean, we do have our record space, but those are all climate-controlled. Um, I, I don't, I don't know. We, I mean, if, I, I, I don't know.
Well, okay, so let's do this. Um, we, we'll put together another space committee. I'll get with President Morris. Uh, do we need a resolution or anything, or we just bounce off the same that we had before?
The last committee was selected to work with LARA on the space needs study. So it largely comprised of anybody that was going to have the space worked on, and it included two council member, one commissioner to have discussions on cost contracts. So that's what that committee was, was working with RQAW.
So, so then let's do this. We'll set it up the same way we did with the insurance committee. We'll draft, um, that, um, I'll, I'll get with President Morris, advise him that this is coming. Um, you'd think you'd have something ready by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. So at our next meeting, we can come back and we will present that resolution. We'll get with council to see where, who they'd like to be on there. In the meantime, we can put our thinking caps on as to who we would like to be on there, um, and then we can move forward with that. I, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you that we have to do something. Uh, it's just a matter of what are we going to do at a reasonable rate? Um, because I don't want to waste tax dollars, period. So, okay. Um, public comment under twenty twenty, anything else?
No.
Okay. Uh, public comment under twenty twenty dash two. Okay? If not, our next meeting, oh, I'm sorry. Hi, how are you? Good.
That thing's red. Who's turning it on? Right, good evening, lady and gentlemen. I appreciate just a few minutes here at the end. Um, I found out this afternoon about the, the change in your decision on the Pantheon, and I thought it was important for me to come here and just share, share with you some of the things that are going on there. Um, we also have several of our coworkers here and entrepreneurs.
Great. Good to see y'all.
Yeah, and they want to share their stories as well. So I'm not, I'm not going to go through everything in this handout, but you guys can read. You know what our mission is. Um, we're here to help small businesses and entrepreneurs grow and thrive. Since twenty twenty-four at the Pantheon, we've served, um, fifty-five clients. We've created nineteen jobs through our new small businesses and the businesses that have expanded. We've had three new business starts, cap investment of five hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in those new businesses and the expansion of those businesses, four hundred and eighty-eight jobs supported, and over seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand in sales increases of the businesses that we've worked with. So that's just a little bit. And we also have seventy-five cowork members. Seven hundred and one people have attended business development programs since January of twenty twenty-five. Those we're able to offer for free to any business person in Knox County because of the support that you guys have generously provided. We have fifty-five business and entrepreneurial programs in twenty twenty-five so far, and we have provided a hundred and sixty-three hours of free room reservations for community organizations. And you can see on this page here, some of the community organizations that currently use the Pantheon. Um, these are all nonprofit charities, and we do not charge them. I don't, I wouldn't feel right charging the BFW, um, Rainbow Beach, American Red Cross, Knox County Sports Complex, Ford, Knox County CEO. We have currently, I think, ten to fifteen young adults coming to the Pantheon every morning to learn about entrepreneurship. Uh, Rotary Young Club, uh, the Young Rotary Club meets at the Pantheon. We do not charge them. So, just a little sampling of what we provide the community. I'm very proud of what the Pantheon has accomplished so far in the five years that we've been operational. Um, I believe that we are one piece of the economic development puzzle in Knox County. Uh, we work very closely with Chris Pats at KCIED. Chris is on my board. I'm on his board. So we work in tandem. Uh, Chris is very focused, of course, on business development and attraction. We are focused on investing in the ideas of our own people. And with that, I want to say I brought several of those people with me tonight, um, and I don't want to go on and on. But I would ask that you give them a little opportunity.
Sure, absolutely.
To tell you what they're up to.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Who would like to go first?
Thank you.
You bet. No, no, if you would, please come to the mic and just state your name for the record and, and thank you.
Hello, my name is Chelsea Tidor, but my brand name goes by C.C. Crowns Media. And, um, I deal with social media as far as like YouTube, um, graphic design, and I sell water cups, uh, to help people drink water, to get more water and get more healthy. And the Pantheon has been absolutely amazing. That is where I rent, uh, office space, and it's just so quiet, and it comes with everything. It comes with the kitchen. It comes with a printer. It's all in one place. I don't have to go to different places. It's all there. And you can have, I can have a meeting with clients there, and it's just of, everybody that I've brought there always say, oh, they love the environment. It looks nice. It looks professional. And recently, they have brought a, um, organization, a program from Evansville that's starting a program called Jump Start. And what they do is that they teach you about real estate, about affordable housing, and it's free. It's a hundred dollars to, um, deposit, but at the end of the program, you get your hundred dollars back. Uh, and they have like a graduation, and it's just a really nice program that they're starting. I applied and I got it, and I wouldn't able to do that if the Pantheon haven't invited them to come and talk and share what they're doing. So what that can be is, when I go and I learn about real estate and affordable housing, I can come back and do housing here in Vincent's. And with social media, um, with my business, I can have interview. Example, I had an interview with the mayor, and it, it's on my YouTube, and people that I know through my community, through Jesus Day, I'm the vice president of Jesus Day. I'm starting, uh, I'm in the board of a nonprofit called A Lot Against Bullying. Um, and so with that, people who've watched the video learn about Vincent's. They learn about things they didn't even know Vincent's had. Example, the Vincent's app. They didn't know about the app, and through that app, they're using it. Example, when there's trains, the app shows you how, which way you can go to avoid the trains. I know in Vincent's, trains are like our worst enemy. We don't, especially if we're going somewhere, and then boom, a train stop, we're like, okay. But the app shows you where to go, so you don't have to get stopped by a train. So what I'm saying is, Pantheon is very, um, important, and it is helping. Slowly but surely, things are getting done. I moved to Vincent's, and I'm loving the city. And there's no other place where you can go except the Pantheon if you want to have, uh, interview, if you just want to go and just relax and meet new people. They have amazing businesses. Um, when I did the interview with the mayor, it was at a studio that they provide. There's no other place I can go to do that. They provide everything, uh, camera, microphones, the setup is great. And I'm telling people about Pantheon that wants to start a business. People have really great business ideas, but they don't have a place to go to have that idea be listened to or people to teach them how to. They have advisors that comes and advise people who's been in business for years, and they just have really good networking and connection to people who need that kind of like, um, help. So, for me, it has helped me, and I have seen what it's doing for other people around me as well. And to the people that I know, I have told them about the Pantheon, and they have come, and they have become a member. And they always have great things to say about it. I've never heard anybody said nothing negative about Pantheon, and everybody get along as far as like the coworkers and everything. So, me personally, it has helped, and I know that it's going to help people within my age, age group and around me within my community.
Great. Thank you. What, what?
Yes.
Water cup? What, what is?
So, it's, um, so it's cups that, it's like a glass cup.
Okay.
And I designed it to make it look really nice. So people want to drink it. They want to pick it up and drink it and drink water, because people, um, people look with their eyes first. Like, if somebody sees something that looks pretty, they're more attracted to it, to come to it than, than, you know, if it's not. For example, if I have a cu, a bottle of water and somebody else is selling a bottle of water, their bottle of water has no design in it, but we're selling it the exact same price. They don't have no design in it. It's bland, nothing. But in my water bottle, I have like stickers. That's just an example. I decorate it more presentably. I can guarantee you, they're going to come and buy my water, water, bottle of water. Why? Because I have presented them what they're paying for. I show value of what they're paying for. So with my water bottles, it shows you value. You see, if you come in, you see this, oh, I want to drink my water today. And water is very important for people to drink, so I, our slogan is drink water a cup at a time. So.
All right. Thank you. I, I was just curious what that, what that was. I've, I've not heard that term, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Bottle of water or cup of water, but.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hey, my name is Eric Walters, and, uh, I'm a Pantheon coworker, uh, and a small business owner as well. Uh, here representing the Pantheon and, uh, definitely encourage the committee to reconsider the decision around cutting that budget. And, uh, I'll share my story. Uh, I've been at Vincent's for about three years. Came from Boston as a technology worker and, uh, started, uh, working at the Pantheon, uh, for my remote working job. But found an opportunity real quickly based on the resources that Pantheon provided, actually also started a business. So I had a hot desk, started a retail business, and to make a long story short, uh, that business has grown significantly, and I actually had the opportunity to rent an office there just about two months ago, uh, to, uh, which was necessary because I made my first hire. I was really excited to hire, uh, a rank, a le, a recent Lincoln High School graduate, uh, who just came out of, uh, high school, was looking for work, and he had the skills that I needed to help me grow my business. And uh, I also just last week hired my second employee. Uh, he was also a recent Lincoln High School graduate. And both of these students that I hired into my business had applied to about fifty jobs locally and they got no response at all. And I was very happy to be able to hire them into my business because they're both extremely talented. And my appeal to the committee is that someone that's extremely talented that gets frustrated, they apply to fifty jobs locally. And they don't get any response, what do you think's gonna happen? They're gonna probably leave town. They're gonna go work somewhere else. Uh, so the Pantheon gives me the opportunity to actually retain talent within our town and our community. And I'm paying these two grads and they're now contributing taxes to the town and to the county as well. So there, there's a lot of economic opportunity that I'm able to create for the town and the city because of the Pantheon. And the resources, uh, that that, uh, the coworking space and just the opportunities uh, that it gives to me as a small business owner.
What, what business, if I may?
Sure, it's called a Timely Souls.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I love sneakers and I love luxury watches.
But what, what watches?
Luxury watches.
Luxury, I'll say.
So um, I actually started the business because I was just kind of combining my watches with my shoes and what I personally liked. And uh, it turned into a, a pretty significant appeal to uh, bringing that to the mass market. And uh, my business has grown substantially over the past few years and the Pantheon is definitely a big contributor to that.
Great, alright, thank you.
I thank you for your story for highlighting exactly the intent of the Pantheon.
Yeah.
So that's an incredible story.
Yeah.
Thank you for moving here and investing here.
Yeah, my pleasure. Um, and I have two daughters as well, uh, that are, uh, one's in, in middle school and one is in elementary school. And my hope and dream for them is that they uh, keep their talents in Knox County and that they become an entrepreneur. And I know that the first place I would send them is to the Pantheon to start a business and to hire and grow their own company. Um, if they don't find the place that they want to work here, uh, or don't have the immediate opportunity, but they can start their own business if they want to through the Pantheon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Eric.
Good.
I just want to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. Um, my name, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can speak up, I'm soft spoken, so.
You're good, you're good, you're good.
Alright, my name's Christopher Kaufman. I am the owner of Impact Marketing Services. So our company does social media marketing. Um, we serve several people in town, several different companies. Um, I took the business full-time in two thousand and twenty-three. Um, in June, two thousand and twenty-three, um, and my business has seen substantial growth ever since then. Um, two thousand and twenty-four, we've had our highest grossing revenue ever. And then two thousand and twenty-five, uh, we just passed that number like two weeks ago. So we have like four months left, which is awesome and we're gonna have, you know, our highest grossing revenue again this year, which I'm really excited about. Um, none of that's possible without the Pantheon. Um, there are uh, free uh, like business seminars or free resources or free business advising. Um, I wouldn't have a company without them. Um, I wouldn't have two part-time employees providing extra income for them. Uh, if I didn't have the Pantheon. And I think Nicole mentioned earlier that the Rotary Young Leaders also meets out of there, our board meets out of there. Um, we started that project probably three to four years ago. And our big project every year is the half marathon in town. Um, that event alone raises about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars each year. And that money goes straight back into local nonprofits and community projects, different community events. Um, we average about three hundred and fifty runners, four hundred runners every year. And last year, we had about fourteen states represented, so you're having different people from out of state come to the community. Spending money at restaurants, staying at hotels, stuff like that, so. Um, yeah, we're really excited about that, uh, the Rotary Young Leaders. And I won't take up too much time, but yeah, I just want to say, you know, thank you for having us come up here and speak. And like I said, I wouldn't have a business without the Pantheon resources and opportunities. And like Eric was saying, like, a lot of people my age, they leave, they go to Indy, they go to Evansville. And you know, we want people to stay in Vincent's and that's another part of the Rotary Young Leaders to get people to stay in Knox County. So I hope you guys reconsider and, you know, I understand that budgets have to be cut and managed each year, so that's totally fine. But uh, yeah, if you could, please reconsider, that'd be great. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
One more statement, um, it's very interesting to hear what you're saying because when, when we started this project um, back years ago. It was hard for everyone to understand and I, I explained, this is economic development backwards, um, inverted. We are literally growing our own and keeping our own and retaining our own and nurturing our own. And giving um, the ability to make sure our own stay, so.
Sure.
Again, hearing that is.
Yeah, and like Eric was saying, like he just hired some kids at a, like in high school. My part-time employees also are from Knox County, they work here. Um, you know, this is remote work for them, so they do have full-time jobs, but this is extra income for them. And so I'm just really happy to provide that and we're on the cusp of adding another, hopefully, full-time employee in the next few months, so, yeah, really excited.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome back, Chris.
I just want to add some additional context, um, especially to what um, Kelly just said. Uh, we're getting ready, uh, KCIED is getting ready to kick off a new strategic planning process. It's been since, uh, since, and I know we're gonna talk about that in a couple of weeks. Um, it's been since two thousand and sixteen that we did a full-fledged strategic plan for economic development. And I just wanted to share because I was, I was literally looking at this today, not knowing I was gonna talk about it tonight. Uh, but in two thousand and sixteen, KCDC, uh, with the help of a lot of community stakeholders. Uh, one of the priorities for the strategic plan that came out of that two thousand and sixteen plan, uh, was entrepreneurship and innovation. And it is to, it was to create an entrepreneurial ecosystem of connectedness, innovation, and a supportive culture. Uh, to achieve self-sustaining business development. And then there's a bunch of action items that came with that. In two thousand and twenty-two, we updated our action matrix, uh, which was basically all the tasks that, that came out of this plan. Uh, that was put together. And it wasn't just KCDC, it was the Chamber, it was all of the institutions. Uh, but you know, a- and we've had this conversation before and you know, you know how I feel about this. Um, Nicole and I work very closely together. Um, I've always argued that any community needs to concentrate on three focus areas when it comes to economic development. Business attraction, which as, as Nicole reminded us, you know, our office does the majority of that. Um, business retention and expansion, um, a- a- and I will confess that when it comes to BR and E. We typically will concentrate on the larger fish. Um, you know, the Futabas, the um, uh, Sunrise Coals. Um, I mean, I've even met with, you know, single proprietors before if they've requested us to come out. But a lot of the tools that we have to support local business, uh, typically are for larger companies. And so, and you know, I got here, what, five and a half years ago. Uh, and the first week on the job, our board voted to invest in the Pantheon. So we provided the matching dollars for the EDA grant, uh, that went to help build out the second floor, uh, interior and some of the exterior work. And um, you know, I'm just stepping into this, it's, I'm five days on the job, uh, and talking to my board of directors about this thing. Um, and immediately, and I've worked all over the state. I've seen, you know, probably most of the incubation and coworking spaces across the state. And I can tell you that when Nicole and I travel, the Pantheon has a reputation and it's a good one. Um, and there's more activity and more programming that happens here than you will find in Evansville, Bloomington, Columbus. Um, and it's incredible, I think, that a, that a rural coworking space does as much as what happens here. Um, and this is probably premature, but you know, Nicole and I just started talking this past week. About a new program that would target Main Street entrepreneurs and how do we help them? How do we help turn around some of the vacancies that we've seen in the, uh, you know, in the business, in the storefronts along Main Street, for example? You know, I don't know if we can get this put together, but if we can, I think it would be incredible. Um, and we would work with some downtown business owners to basically take an entrepreneur, have them, you know, pitch an idea. Pick the best from that selection and then partner with them to open a new shop downtown. Um, I know that's not, it may not be technology related, um, um, like some of the other entrepreneurs are doing. But I think, I think it would have a, have an impact. So I guess if, if there's one thing I would say, it's that we need this function. Um, and it's a function that I think, you know, when we think about self-sustaining. That is difficult to do when you're providing space at less than market rate for a startup. So um, I would just ask you to think about those things. Um, and uh, um, yeah, I mean, in full disclosure, as, as Nicole mentioned, I am on the board of directors for the Pantheon. Which means I have a fiduciary responsibility to ensure its success. So which, you know, obviously that, that may cause some conflicts with, you know, other things. But um, but I fully support and believe that um, that we deserve to have this investment and I think of this as an investment. I mean, there are some services that you provide that you just have to. Um, we are investing in these people sitting out here who are creating jobs and creating additional capital investment for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hey. Everyone, my name is Nabili Ball. I have moved to Vincent's recently, three weeks ago with my wife and two children. She is from here. So I will give you an outsider's perspective. Before I do that, let me qualify that, that perspective. I have raised millions of dollars in venture capital. I'm a technology entrepreneur. I moved here from Columbus, Ohio. I've spent the last decade working with economic, economic development committees, the Jobs Ohio, Ohio X, which is the first institution of its kind, helping entrepreneurs do what they do. I've seen what success looks like and I've seen what success doesn't look like and I'll tell you that the Pantheon is what success looks like. It takes decades to build the kind of community that I have seen just in three weeks that has developed here in the Pantheon. I've never felt, I, moving here, I felt I would be missing out or something. That I'd be missing on my network, on the people who thought like me, who were building great things. And I, I was sad that I would lose access to that. The Pantheon had showed me that there's incredible talent here, doing great things. And I think if we remove this from our community because of a little bit of money, that would be a huge detriment to our community. Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate your words. Welcome to Knox County.
Hi.
Hello, thank you all for letting us come tonight. I'm Kim Foreman. I'm direct, Director of Programming and Development at the Pantheon. And I just started in April, so my story's a little different. I've been in this county for the last eighteen, nineteen years. I was from Indianapolis and came down here. Fell in love with the county and my husband and I said, we're never going back to Indy. Our family is all there. We literally are here a silo. It is just the six of our family. We have no other family here. When I came to Knox County, I wasn't quite sure if our family would be a fit. We have fallen in love and we are a fit. However, I have three teenagers, one who just turned twenty, so sadly she's no longer a teenager. An eighteen-year-old who just graduated from North Knox and a current senior. None of them have the intentions of staying in Knox County. I had one child, like Eric shared, who applied multiple places within Knox County and never heard back from any of them. So she said, Mom, I gotta go. So she went and hired on Sullivan. She left the county. She is coming back, thank heavens. Mom is very happy about that. But she doesn't know if she will stay and the reason is, is because of employment. The other reason is, is because up until I made the connection at the Pantheon, she didn't know she could h- have her own business. She is looking to grow her own salon and create her own business as an esthetician and a hairstylist. I have another daughter who's going to study equestria. Trust me, I'm still learning what that is, but basically she will be her own employer. She will create her own business. Not only will she get a college education, but she has free access to resources here within the county. Up until we heard about the Pantheon and got involved with them, she had every intention of leaving Knox County. Now she can see that she may be able, be able to develop her dream here within Knox County. My first night at Pantheon, they threw me in. It was our first Founder's Night. I'm sure you've heard of the program. We partnered with area high schools to allow students to pitch their businesses. It was incredible to see that. Now, today, every single day, we have one of those high school students growing his business every day when he gets out of school. He comes in and he begins to build. He has signed on in the last week to employees for his own business and he hasn't even graduated high school yet. All of that was made possible through programming within the Pantheon. So if you think about it beyond just that, you're lighting a fire within our own students and within our own kids. To be a part of our community and love this county as much as us adults do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, it's about six years ago that the uh, City Council, the Mayor, the County Council and the Board of Commissioners. Got together and started talking about um, forming a Center for Entrepreneurship. And the idea of the Pantheon and, and out of the eighteen um, elected officials, we had either seventeen or eighteen were in favor of doing this. I mean, it was basically unanimous. The city pitched in a million, the county pitched in a million, and we were off and running. And there was never a time that there was a promise made that there wouldn't be tax month, that we wouldn't use tax money. If you're in government, that's the money you have. And it's all about making wise investments of, or with those tax dollars. Uh, the city and county at that time were all in and they launched it, so. You own this business, the county and the city own it. And, and it seems a little bit odd to try to encourage you to invest money in your own business. But that's, that's what it is. And if this, and, and there was never a promise that the Pantheon would be self-supporting. In fact, it's almost impossible. We don't have that many ways to generate income at the Pantheon. We ran a few offices, but that's kind of peanuts when it comes to uh, the yearly costs. Uh, there, there was, I know there were some overly optimistic people that said, you know, I'll bet this could be self-supporting in. That, that's, that's not possible. We don't expect Chris Path and KCIED to be self-supporting. They are our vehicle for economic development, as is the Pantheon. We're investing in our own future, so please uh, keep supporting it. It's a, it's a wonderful addition to our beat.
Thank you, Harry. Good to see you.
Sorry, don't mind me. Apologies firstly, sorry. Uh, good evening. Thank you for having me here today and uh, my apologies again. I had to rush here from my gym, so.
If you would state your name, we, we know Harry, so.
Um, that's, that's why I was going.
You're forgiven.
My name is um, Shiv Patel. I am the Operations Manager at the Pantheon and I pretty much there every day. I also run a cleaning business called Patel Cleaning Services, started end of January with the help of Pantheon and then the members. So every day as an operations manager, my job is to bring in members, find different people who have ideas. And sign up with memberships or, you know, connect with APs to BP's, you know, bring in members, connect with them, the right advisor. Or just learn about different businesses. So me as a new entrepreneur, I walked in the Pantheon and like, as, I started as an intern at the Pantheon and this is in November. Um, I, let me go back a little bit. I was a V student. I started, you know, my major was management and leadership. I got contacted to Pantheon through my professor and I started as an intern. So when I didn't knew anything about Pantheon, what Pantheon was, I heard about it, but didn't knew anything, what, what they did, what was not going on and stuff like that. So when I became a part as an intern and then I started learning about the resources they provide. Hey, guess what? You have free resources. You can go to this session. You can learn about business. That's when it kicked in. And we have organized so many programs over this couple of months that I have been running my business off. And it's been, I'm seven months in the business and I feel like I am at a good position that I can run my business off. There are so many other members, coworkers, like as Nicole mentioned, we have seventy-five members at the moment, coworking members. So if I have any trouble, I can always go to, let's say, hey, Christopher, I need marketing help. I can just walk up to Christopher like, hey, do you mind helping me? Everyone is open and help out, like, you know, we're always helping out each other and stuff like that. Everyone is open and help out, like, you know, we're always helping out each other and stuff like that. So there's, it's not like, oh, you're just tied with one person or you don't have any help. That's what Pantheon is, help each other out, that's what we're trying to focus on. And as a, as me as an operations person, I try to find the same skill setup. And when I, when I try to bring in members, that's what I, like, you know, when, when I'm giving tours to people, like yesterday I was giving one, oh, hey, I'm, like, he also was, he was also about to start a marketing business. And we come in, I introduce him, like, you know, and then I gave him a tour of the building. Oh, what is the membership? Oh, it's only a hundred dollars. Oh, guess what, that is so cheap for so many resources you guys provide. Oh, guess what, we have open coworking space, we have conference room, we, we provide full functioning kitchen, we have podcast room, like, so many things for a hundred dollars, which is so much reasonable price than other places. So we have members who come in and go with a smiling face and they want to be a part of a Pantheon. So that's something like, every time I take a tour, you know, that's the good feedback I get. I have never heard anything bad about it. Or even if like, you know, just normal people, we just come in just for tour, like, hey, do you mind giving us a tour? The comment I have heard so far is, this is a good use of the resource. Like, you know, the open broken-down theater, this is a nice resource space you guys, you know, created. So that's something that enlightens, like, you know, me and like, it's good. Who doesn't like to hear that, right? So that's what I'm trying to say, like, you know, it's, it's been, so far, it's been a really good helping, like, you know, help in hand and, um, we just want continued support from you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Shelton?
I'm David Shelton, Knox County Clerk, how y'all doing tonight? So I wanted to share my Pantheon story with you as well. Uh, I went to the Pantheon back in early twenty twenty-three with an idea. That was shortly after we had our first election with electronic poll books and discovered I had a problem with the encoder, which programs the voting card to pull up the right ballot for each voter. It was loose, it wiggled around, the power cord would fall out, which caused issues with our elections. So I went to see Nicole and she put me in touch with somebody there at the Pantheon to help me take my rough idea, my crude drawing and design a bracket. We went through a couple of prototypes and it seemed to really work out well. And then I told some of my counterparts in other counties about it. They started placing orders, I realized, well, this may be a pretty good idea, I need to protect that. Where do I go to get it patented? So you know what I do? I go to the Pantheon, I talked to Nicole, she puts me in touch with the right people. So this bracket now has been patented, it's in use in twenty-three counties here in Indiana. The bracket itself won a national award from the EAC for election innovations. Uh, some of my counterparts in the state of Georgia heard about this bracket, they read about it in some election nerd magazine that we all read. And they said, hey, we're having the same problem, we have slightly different setup. And they reached out to me, they found me, they contacted me. I had to design the second generation bracket to fill their applications. I'm now getting ready to start R and D on the, uh, third generation of this bracket. I set up last week through last Wednesday at the Georgia Annual Election Conference, I set up as a vendor my very first time. As of the end of business today, I've only been home five days, I've already received twenty thousand dollars in orders, it was pretty good for a side gig. Um, before I went to Georgia, I needed some promotional materials. I'm not an artist, so again, I went and saw Nicole, she hooked me up with a graphic artist and designed my digital flyers. So I just really wanna, you know, reinforce the fact that the Pantheon really has been a one-stop shop, uh, from rough idea to refined design. Uh, they hooked me up with the production, uh, we're doing, uh, commercial three D printing is what we're doing with this. And with these orders coming in from the state of Georgia, I'm not gonna double production, I'm gonna have to triple the production just to keep up with the orders right now. And like I said, can't say it enough, you know, Pantheon has been a one-stop shop for somebody that just had an idea. You know, I, I really feel the investment is worthwhile. Uh, you know, had a lot of people speak about it here today, there's a lot of other stories that, you know, people are shy, they don't wanna talk about it. You just may not hear about it, but it serves a purpose. I'm a good steward of my tax dollars that I'm in charge of as a county clerk, this is a good investment of our tax dollars, our added money.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
If there's no one else, um, our next meeting is September second, twenty twenty-five, at ten AM in this very chamber. But before we leave, happy birthday to Julie. So wanted to wish Julie a happy birthday. Make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, aye, aye, motion's clear. Thank you, everybody.